Okay. I'd like to vote the order, our September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting to order at seven oh three. We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilor Holmes is online and the other five councils are in person. Looking at the agenda and seeing things, is there any comments or concerns or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjust the agenda for under new business. I'd like to recommend that we move number five to number two. I'd like to recommend we move number four to number three. I would also like to add a number, new number four, which would go above the appointment of a new city councillor with the announcement of my resignation and how we can move forward to fill the two slots today.
Okay, so we've a motion to move number five to number two, oath of office, and then, and then appointment of student rep would be three. Four would be announcement of resignation. And then the appointment of new city councillor would be five and oath is six, but those would be open for discussion now with for what we will do and then leave six, seven, and eight as is.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are going to go ahead and do public comment first. We do have one here, any online? This is placed on the agenda where public's invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council requested to give their name and city residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers limit their testimony to five minutes as we are limited thirty minutes total for all public comment. I have a timer here to help you if you need it. And we do have Mrs. Higis, Alicia, if you'd like to come up.
And Mayor, it's Ms. Higis.
Higis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alicia Higis and I'm a resident of Scappus. I've reviewed the draft city manager evaluation tool and I want to highlight how the standards outlined in the draft compared to the conduct we have seen from Mr. Burganger. Starting with accountability and transparency, the draft stresses integrity, honesty, and credibility. Yet I have still not heard back from council since the last meeting despite making a formal request for a response. Instead, it was Mr. Burganger himself who replied, even though the complaint was about him. Allowing the subject of a complaint to control or limit the council's response directly undermines the very accountability this draft tool calls for. Looking at council relations, the draft emphasizes open communication and respect for the governing's body role. By inserting himself into a matter that should have been addressed by the council, Mr. Burganger disregarded your oversight responsibilities and created the appearance of conflict of interest. On citizen relations, the draft outlines the importance of public, building public trust by listening and responding. Yet dismissing or redirecting citizen complaints without a council-led review does the opposite. It damages public confidence and signals that leadership is not accountable to the community. When it comes to leadership and staff accountability, the draft requires the city manager to model ethical behavior, set standards, and ensure accountability at all levels. In practice, we have seen the opposite. Repeated staff misconduct and violations have gone unchecked under his supervision. From my own experience, every complaint I submitted regarded staff was quickly dismissed as if it had no merit, even when supported by evidence. My concerns were never validated and no corrective actions were taken. This approach fosters a culture where misconduct is ignored and accountability is absent. Consistency of standards is another concern. It is troubling that council create a brand-new evaluation tool for Mr. Burganger when an evaluation process already existed for the previous sitting manager. Why not use the same tool? How can performance be fairly compared if benchmarks are different? This choice raises questions about whether the intent is true accountability or simply a way to delay meaningful evaluation. Finally, the issue of timing. When is this evaluation actually supposed to take place? Each time I bring serious issues before you, the council votes to cancel the next meeting. That does not appear to be an effort to address problems. It gives the impression that they are being ignored or minimized. And we cannot overlook the last evaluation that Mr. Burganger, where council approved a cost-of-living wage increase despite the misconduct concerns. Even worse, that raise was backdated into a budget and by appearance made it easier for him to purchase a more expensive home as if he had not researched the housing market here before accepting this position less than a year ago. Council President, President Tyler Miller, you spoke about transparency and accountability. I am waiting to see whose values demonstrate through his council's actions, not just words. We still need answers from the last meeting and the lack of response is unacceptable. With ongoing misconduct by both Mr. Burganger and Chief Llewellyn, the question must be asked. Why is council not responding with urgency? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get any more online, Susan? Okay. I was gonna say something, but I'll wait. I will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at August eighteen, twenty twenty-five city council work session minutes and August eighteen, twenty twenty-five city council meeting minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Councilor Santiago makes a motion any second.
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now the fun part, oath of office for Patrol Officer Jacob Bernhardt.
We moved it up so your family and friends didn't have to stick around.
Yeah.
Our entire council agenda.
For the Raider game, I'm sure. Okay. Repeat that for me. I, Jacob Bernhardt. Please. I, Jacob Bernhardt.
I, Jacob Bernhardt.
Hereby swear on my oath. To honestly and faithfully. Discharge my duties of police officer. For the city of Scappus. And that I will support the laws. The Constitution of the State of Oregon. And the United States of America. And the charter and ordinances. Of the city of Scappus. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you. Anybody want to picture, you want your family? Yep, come on up. Usually they use kids. Sleeping. Oh, they're over there. Proud moment. Grandpa.
How's it going?
Good.
Good.
You sure? We've got an empty seat.
Very good.
Thank you, guys. You guys have been to clear the house. We're getting used to this. Mr. Bernhardt, Jeff's dad and the city council.
Yep. His mom is on signing.
It's Graham.
Oh, his grandma, not his mom?
Well, it's Jacob's.
Oh, okay.
And she's been there.
Right, right.
And I graduated with his mom, shared my class. The dad was a year or two older. You aren't like my baseball coach.
Okay. City Manager Burganger, I just want to give you the opportunity based on, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to pronounce her name correctly, Alicia's, yeah, thank you. Comment, is there anything that you would like to say on the record? This is purely optional, but means that the commentary is somewhat defamatory. I do want to give you the opportunity to respond.
Right, no, I appreciate that, Councilor, Council President Miller. Yeah, the response for the record for the community is the city staff and the council have both responded according to our policies and procedures with the appropriate response according to personnel investigations. Yeah, I'll leave it at that, but it has gone through, the council has been made aware of the whole process. You've been involved and say you've been aware of what the situation's been, so it's followed correct policies and procedures.
Yeah, and just for the perception, the optics part of it to the community, whether it be online, at a future viewing, et cetera, I have been copying on those emails and you have been extremely responsive, so has Chief Llewellyn to the allegations that have been made against the police department in the city. I have appreciated your thorough responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now back to appointment of student representative. We were joined in our work session by Tyler Ferrera. If you'd like to come back up to the mic real quick. Anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to add? This is a new position for us. We were looking at getting, kind of building that relationship with the school district, building it with the youth of the city. I think, and Joel's really been pushing this forward of trying to build a student representative that could be part of our group, the, to help us get the feeling from the youth in the school district at the same time, take back what we're doing here to the school district and relay that information. And so we've opened up this position, we have Tyler interviewed today, and I thought you did a very good job, appreciate it. Anybody else?
No, for anybody that wants to watch the interview, it will be in the work session recording that the city recorder will post on YouTube later. You did a great job in your interview. Yeah, you're welcome.
Yep, this is a new position, so we're kind of learning as we go, maybe eventually lead to a student council. But this maybe steps here and, oh, I guess, do we want to do it with a vote or do we want to take a motion?
Let's do a motion.
Yeah, since there's only.
Yes, Councilor.
I move that we approve the appointment of Mr. Tyler Ferrera as the first student representative of the city council for the coming school year.
A motion by Councilor Haugen to approve Tyler Ferrera as our first student representative for the Scappus School District. Any seconds? Second by Council Santiago. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, welcome. Once we get a full council, you might be sitting down there back table.
I know.
I'm just here.
I did second, can you do it again?
And you can stay with us and join us the rest of the night.
Thank you.
And what, give you some time here at the very end, we kind of go around the room and everybody kind of offer some things. If you have a minute or two at the end that you'd like to tell us what's going on in your high school world or for some big event or anything you'd like to share. But you'll follow their lead, so you'll see what they're offering. Appreciate it. Moving on. We had some. We're back to number four now, so we have an announcement to make?
Yes, so as stated earlier, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. Unfortunately, due to competing priorities in my life, I had to make the tough decision to resign from council effective immediately. However, in weighing this decision and understanding where we are as a council, especially given we had two applicants, we're speaking with city manager Burganger today. If there is an opportunity within our code, if there's a, for council to be able to essentially waive the notice period, given that we've gone through that step already and we have two, in my opinion, qualified candidates, I think that would be good additions to the council. I'm also thinking about this for the long term for the team, so versus the thought, my thought process here is what's important is having a whole, a consist, a holistic team come January for goal setting. Putting two players on the team now that are qualified and available would help give these two individuals time to get acclimated into this rhythm and cadence and then be able to get up to speed and then you can go into a successful goal setting as a cohesive team for next year. So with that, I will turn it over to city manager Burganger because there's more specific wording that he would be able to explain, but there is a, there is a path forward for the group and for you all to consider.
Right, so, and I did verify this with our city attorney as well, just wanted to go through that with her. So our city charter does not specify procedure around what to do with an appointment, just as it will be appointed by the council. So the way the charter was voted in, it's very open to however the council wants to fill an appointment. However, when you get to our municipal code, when you look at council rules and procedure in section, chapter two dot oh four, there are several sections talk about what we have codified for procedure for the council when there is a vacancy. Those are mostly found in two Scappus municipal codes, chapter two point oh four point oh eight oh, which is around appointments, and then chapter two point oh four point one two zero with vacancies in elective office. In summary, those basically say that when there is an opening, it shall be the vacancy shall be announced by resolution at the next meeting from when the opening happens, that the council will give the public chance to apply and set those procedures in place and then to be appointed thereafter. So those are the regular procedures that we have in there. There is a section, though, that does allow for some leniency in that in sec, chapter two point oh four point oh three oh, section titled voting, where the council can suspend the rules as long as there is a unanimous decision by the council, that is, it is applicable to the situation, that it should be suspended for whatever reason. The main concern around the way it's written is, or for the situation, is that there is enough due process for the public to apply. And I guess if the council were to choose to suspend the rules, it would be on basis of that we've already posted a, the position people had the opportunity to apply for councillor that, you know, going for another week would not really provide any more applications that we've done, the enough due process. If that is the case, you could suspend those rules based off of that process. The only difference between the current council position that is open and the additional one of Councilor Jacobs is her term goes a little bit longer, but all else is the same, they're both at large positions. The duties are in essence the same, it's just that one thing. So with that would be the decision of the council, for the request of Councilor Jacobs, could you make this happen today? You could, if it was unanimous decision that those things are meant, that you felt it meant the due process for the public. If not, it would, the other route would be to potentially choose one or two other routes. One would be choose one today and then do the regular process so that people apply and then go through that process again. Or the third route would be to vote, you know, give another week for people to apply and then vote for both at the same time at the next council meeting. And there are lots of different options you can go, but it would be up to the council of how they wanted to move forward based off the Council Jacob's recommendation as well. Yes.
So, Councilor Friends' term was going to end this, on?
November.
Next, yeah, next December. Few years after that.
So, how do you decide what's what?
Right, the council would just determine, if you were to either now or the future choose both at the same time, you would just designate which position is filled. You'd specifically say this for Marissa's position ending in December of twenty twenty-eight compared to La Friends' position ending in twenty twenty-six.
Do we have time, since it's not on the agenda, if we were to decide to read a resolution declaring a vacancy? Can I still read that tonight?
I would say, so you could suspend, you could go by way of saying you just suspend that rule that has to be at the next council meeting. Councilor Jacobs did notify you and I before this council meeting, so there was the notice before the council meeting, so you could, I mean, I would say yes, either way, it would just be based off of the council's fill on that. You could read the resolution today and you could appoint, but if you were to do it all today, like say you'd have to suspend the regular notice period, and if you're doing that, you might as well throw in the, just for clarity on the posting.
And I'm kind of looking at our options. My thoughts are if we, if we declared an open position today, we could then open applications for one week and we have a work session coming up nine thirty where we talk fifty-year plan and we can, at that time, if we have to interview, we could interview somebody. And then I don't know if at that meeting we can vote or if we'd have to do it the following week on our October, I think, fourth meeting, but we would be done by then. Or we we suspend the rules and with the, you know, someone makes a motion, we can have, we can change that tonight. I haven't been able to discuss this with Mr. Rayuda yet to see one, if he's interested in one term or the other. Or my only concern of doing that is if people were, didn't apply because it was only a year term. And maybe they wanted to do a longer term and now that maybe an open one, one opens up with a longer term, you might get more applications. Councilor Holmes.
Yeah, well, this is certainly unfortunate news, Councilor Jacobs. It will be sad to see you go, I've enjoyed working with you, but certainly respect your decision. And I think your reasoning is sound in terms of the timing. Goal setting is very important and having people that have acclimated to, you know, council as a whole and the operations of the city is beneficial. I guess, looking at this last application process, it, it seemed to me that the two applications we did receive came rather early and we did not have additional interest expressed as we came to the close of the application period, is that correct?
Correct. One was even probably before it was official, so it was early.
Okay.
And then we submitted after the, after we opened it.
Yeah, I mean, that's an indication to me that there is a chance, if we were to open up a new application period, we might not get any additional interest. So I think that's something to consider as well.
Yes, Council President Miller.
So one of the options I want to throw out there is if we do decide on a one and two tonight and maybe just keep it open for a week to see if there's any contest to it. And if there's no contest, then we can go ahead and solidify the number two choice. But I'm a little hesitant to not at least keep it open for a week to see if we have any interest.
I'm definitely willing to listen. I would like to ask our applicants if, if, since they've already applied, if, what is their preference? You know, do they, if they were given the option, would they want the three years or the one year? I know Mr. Rayuda in his interview did say, you know, this seemed like a good timing to do it for your, maybe that's somebody's preference versus maybe someone does, would rather do it for three years. If we would like to get on the record, we could ask Marty if he's, what his rec, you know, what he would prefer if given the choice. If that, if that matters. I don't want to rush it, I want to make sure we do it, but again, we did have two applicants. Even before that, we aren't having a lot of applicants. It is a time, we're getting down to the fifty-year plan, it'd be nice to have people on our committee to be able to vote.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
My, my view is that aligns with Kim's, that, you know, the likelihood of getting another candidate that's going to be qualified and will interview in a week is probably pretty remote. Okay, on the other side, we, we can suspend the rules, but with pause. And, and Marissa's points are really good about getting people on board early. I'd also like to have the new councillors being able to, be able to attend the low conference in, coming up in two weeks. So if we, if we push this another week, that's not going to happen. And so there's a real value in onboarding a new councillor and having him at the low conference because it's a huge resource for new councillors. And so that was my, my view on it.
Again, it has to be unanimous, I mean, if I'm good if you guys are comfortable with nominating one for a position and voting on it and nominating, and as to how you would do it, I mean, do we make a motion to accept one for the open position and then one, I mean, are we, we got to vote, I mean, do I make two applications, one for the two-year term and one, or one-year term and one for the three-year term?
Right, I think the, the motion would first be, if you're going to suspend the rules, would that be the intent that you're wanting to go with? Depending on how you suspend the rules, that you'd be going with both applicants and then you just motion for which, one for which term at that point, just assign them. It is just appointed by the councils, up to the council on that one, there's nothing that details how that has to happen. It'd be your decision on how that works.
Can I ask if the council's satisfied with the two applicants? And if they're satisfied with those two in either order, then we can vote on suspending the rules. Because if somebody's not happy with one, then we don't have to say who, we'd want to open it up for another potential week. If you can speak into the microphone just so. If you got, yeah, what was, let Councilor Holmes speak just real quick, go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I would just say, in my opinion, I feel very fortunate that we have two very qualified applicants before us and expressing interest. I'm very pleased.
Great. Mr. Markey.
I'm Marty Markey, I'm one of the applicants and I just wanted to say my preference would be for Councilor Jacobs' term, simply because I wouldn't have to run for office in a year. But I would also defer to the other applicant, if, if he wanted to do the three-year term, that would be fine with me. And I do think it's important, even if you decide to suspend, having to wait until the next council meeting to announce this, I think it's important to give the public an opportunity to apply for this and not just for the public's sake or to protect you from, you know, disgruntled people, but also for either me or John's sake. If, you know, we're on council and somebody is like, well, I would have voted for that. So I just wanted to, to, and, and I'm also very familiar with the fifty-year plan already, so another couple of weeks isn't going to hurt me as far as being familiar with those kind of things that we have to think about.
Yep, Councilor Haugen did bring up a point, we have the annual League of Oregon Cities coming up in a week or two, first of October. And if we did wait till October fourth to vote them in, then it, we would, it might be too difficult. But yeah, I mean, that way we are opening it up for a week just to see if there is any more interest. We can, it would be done by October fourth. Or we just vote to suspend the rules and vote on them tonight. Um, or we just vote to suspend the rules and um, vote on them tonight.
And you could, you could appoint them at that, their, uh, September thirtieth meeting. We just have to um. Make sure that we advertise that there's going to be one thing identified as a regular council meeting, so it'd be a special session or special meeting just for that. Um, and you could do it right before the, the work session, as long as advertised appropriately, we're, that could be an option as well.
Yeah, I, I am, I would like to maybe hear from Mr. Ryuda if he had a preference of what his first choice is, second choice. Um, if, if, if that matters. I, I know he's, he'd be happy with either, um, but if he had a preference. If we, if we did vote him in on September thirtieth, can we still get someone in?
Can we register both of them for the League of, League of Cities if, if at this point, even though we, we don't know which is gonna be, uh, which?
We could try to enroll them with like no name and then, and tell them the name because we have two new counselors potentially.
Marty, are you able to attend the, the conference if, okay?
It's in Portland this year that we uh, if you can make some of the meetings, um. Since we are meeting September thirtieth, are we able to, I could read a red, my thought then if I read a resolution tonight declaring a vacancy. Open up applications for one week. Um, and then after a week, we'll know if we don't have any applications, we can vote on in the September thirtieth and for which one, for which position. And they would then join us at that meeting. To be official, or? Or do we want to suspend the rules and vote them in at this time?
I'm just gonna.
Yeah.
Put in my last two cents here. I, I think just. Given my interaction in the city for the last five years and when openings come up. And the applicants um, that we do receive, um, I believe we still even have openings on like our planning commission um, as well. So I, I would just, I would really encourage you. I think you have a path forward to suspend. You have two qualified candidates. Um, I would, I highly recommend that you move forward and, and vote them in this evening, um, so that. You can have a cohesive team two weeks earlier than two weeks later. Um, I think this is a critical time and um. I, I just would encourage you to, to consider you, you have the option.
So I would entertain a motion to suspend. And, okay, Council Holmes.
Yeah, I'll just uh, following on uh, Counselor Jacobs' comments, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on uh, vacancy notification. And consider the two candidates that have applied.
So Holmes makes a motion to suspend the rule, regulation rules and um, look to vote on both positions tonight. Any seconds?
Second.
Council Hagen seconds. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, it is unanimous. Does that mean you have resigned as of now?
Uh, yes, I will have to resign as of now, so you can bring in the two counselors.
Okay, so um, let's move on to.
And so you do have a resolution for that too. That'd be good reading officially.
Do you have a resolution for me?
Don't we also want to do like a one or two?
Yeah, we'll have to discuss how we vote on that.
Be patient one, but I. Thank you.
So I am looking to. Accept a, do I have to vote for the resolution? Or is it just a resolution? I'm declaring a resolution, declaring a vacant position on the City of Scap, City Councilor, City of Scappus. Uh, resigner position effective September fifteenth as an elected official, city counselor. Council declares Mrs. Jacobs' position vacant at the next election, which will be tonight. A successor will be elected to fill the unexpired term. Resolution tell, take effect passage on the date of approval. So what we're looking now is to vote um, for the two positions.
Right, you want to motion the approval of the vacancy?
Uh, make a, do I hear a res, a motion to approve tonight's resolution declaring a vacant position?
Mister Mayor, I will approve, approve Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Mister Hagen makes a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one. Any seconds? Second by Council Santiago. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're kind of moving on to number, I think the new five appointment of new city counselor. We have two positions. We'll call them the position um. One, which would been La France's position and that expires at no, next November.
So November.
December.
Oh, December.
It will end, it will expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And this number two position will be um, Counselor Jacobs' position expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. We did hear from Mr. Markey that, you know, he prefer, if he had his choice, he'd take the position number two. It's okay to, he wants to be um, considered for position number one as well. Um, but Mr. Ryuda, we have not heard from. Now he's on vacation, out of town. Um. Do you have it? Yeah, we can um. We're gonna vote on one position at a time. And um. I would vote, uh, if you want to turn in application number one. For the term expiring um, twenty twenty-six. Yeah, I'll, I'll have you turn it over for number two. I'll give it back to you. Or put it at the bottom of it.
Why don't we just write the term in next?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Twenty, we can do twenty-five or twenty-eight.
Twenty-six and twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-six, number one, put the year that you vote for them.
Yeah, that, that works, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Tried calling him, he won't answer. Um. Let me just get Kim's vote. Are you sending me a vote, Kim?
Yeah, I'm texting you right now.
Okay, um, what I have here, we'll just, I'm gonna just pick them out of the hat, no particular order. I know, I'm gonna say who their names are, but I'm just not gonna, I don't want to. Say who's, who's first. I mean, there might be a tiebreaker and it's just luck of the draw who the favorite is. Okay, we'll start with President Miller, uh, twenty twenty-six, Markey, twenty-eight, Ryuda. Hagen, Markey, twenty-eight, Ryuda, twenty-six. Holmes, Markey, twenty-eight. Ryuda, twenty-six. Santiago, Markey, twenty-six, Ryuda, twenty-eight. That is the last one. Uh, Markey, twenty-eight, Ryuda, twenty-six. So it's three to two. What I like to say is it's five to zero, five to zero. We have unanimous, we voted unanimously for two. So uh, Marty Markey. Uh, the term that ends in twenty twenty-eight and John Ryuda, twenty twenty-six. Yeah, let's do that. If you want to join us for the rest of the meeting, we'll make it official.
Yes, we swore it.
Yep, we swear it. Susan's got to do it. This is her.
I, Marty Markey. Do hereby solemnly swear that I will. To the best of my ability. Faithfully discharge the duties of. Counselor to which I've been appointed. By the Scappus City Council. I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The laws of the State of Oregon. And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Scappus. So help me God.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, will you notify Mr. Ryuda? I'm very happy, I'm, I'm very happy with both.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I think we're gonna end, I, I really thank you guys, but Mrs. Jacobs, I'm very appreciative of all your help. From the moment we met the first time at your house at dinner before my election, um, you helped. Get me up to speed and really helped me get to this, to where I am now. So I really attribute a lot of this to you. And I thank you for sticking as long as you have and helping us. I appreciate it. We won't be, we do have three. We had two on the planning commission and now we have three. Okay, Ben, I'm counting on you to make sure if you see me miss anything or if we need to do something to keep it legal. That was great, unexpected, but thank you.
I thought we'd go down tonight after I just sent people leave to move up.
It's not typical. Okay, um, we're moving on to Run With Neil event October fourth. As long as I'm not missing Amy Price is online, if you would like to uh, take it from here.
Hi, thank you so much and to the City Council for allowing us to speak. Um, just a clarification, my name is Prince, P R I N C E. Um, but thank you for letting us discuss the opportunity of the twenty twenty-five Run With Neil event that's taking place on Saturday, October fourth at Scappus High School. As many of you know, Run With Neil was created to honor the life of Neil Hoffman, a Scappus High School student. Our mission is to provide youth with resources for mental and physical well-being. And over the past four and a half years, we have been able to distribute funds throughout a variety of ways such as the Run With Neil Scholarship. That is awarded each spring to three Scappus High School seniors. Mentorship programs, supporting our athletes to attend camps, state competitions and purchase equipment that helps to provide them an overall positive experience and support their physical and mental health. Our annual run is Saturday, October fourth, where we will have a five K, a three K and one K courses, which is about the cutest thing to look at a bunch of kids running a one K. This year, each runner will receive a finisher medal as well. In addition, we will have free face painting, tie-dye shirt station. A Polaroid photo station and the snack shack will be open in support of a local sports team. This year, we are partnering again with the Scappus High School Cross Country Team to put on the Run With Neil Invitational the same day as our annual run. This Invitational brings runners from high schools and middle schools across the state to Scappus. We hope that you will attend or share the information about Run With Neil to support our youth. As well as participate in some friendly competition um, in the morning to see who crosses the finish line first. You can find out more information. There are signs um, around town and flyers in most of the businesses, but it's also at runwithneil.org and we hope to see you Saturday, October fourth.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Brandon? We can look, you see, there is a big uh, cross-country meet that day, so there'll be a lot of other schools around as well.
I'll be helping out the whole day.
No, the Run With Neil will be first and then the high school invitationals afterwards. Um, we had a team last year from Louisiana that was here and that was pretty cool. Um. So it, you know, great, great kudos to the athletic director of the Scappus High School in addition to the coaches who really um, make it work for our run and then also a pretty big invitational for the local kids.
No, thank you very much. Great event, very good cause. Uh, I enjoy it and I appreciate it very much.
Great. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. We've all been waiting for C R P U D, Participation and Results. Think it's, is this about an annual event or is this, uh, we like to have the Columbia River PUD come out and give an update of what's going on. Out there in um, electrical part of the world and tonight we're being joined by General Manager Michael Sykes and Engineering Manager, Assistant General Manager Brandon Staley. You guys like to take it from here. Appreciate, thank you for coming.
All right. You wanna, I'll kick it off. Um, so I'll do a little bit of a recap on what we talked about last time. And hopefully Michael will let me know if I did something, but essentially when I was here last time, uh, we kind of let you guys know that we had about thirty-five megawatts of capacity in our service territory. And um, the transmission system itself was kind of constrained with a lot of requests for customers wanting out.
Can you speak a little bit more to this?
If I hold a, have a little closer. Uh, all right. So, do you guys hear me the first time or do I need to restart? Okay. No, that's, that's all right. Um, so at that time, I didn't really have a good, or we didn't have a good plan forward on what we could do to gain capacity in our service territory. So, uh, with that said, um, we really bugged BPA and we got to uh, participate in PARCE, which is a Portland area reinforcement study. Um, and in my opinion, this is a once in a decade opportunity because BPA isn't rolling this kind of a study out to everybody and trust me when I say this, everybody across. Uh, BPS footprint um, wants more capacity and they would enjoy a study like this and I'll explain a little bit why when we get further on. Uh, but let's go to the next slide. Uh, so this group that was involved was Classcanide, McMinnville Water and Light, Fort, Forest Grove. And us and PGE. And PG participated as a transmission customer because they own a lot of transmission in the Portland area. And then BPA performed the study themselves. And so this was a collaboration effort with all of us to try to garner support, which if we go to the next slide, um, talks about that. So basically can do it, or conduct a joint study, uh, try to gain mutual support to move projects forward. Um, and that's kind of one of the key things here. So uh, this whole process started, let's go to the next slide. A little over a year ago, so last August. And um, one thing that they asked for was uh, load combinations that they could study. And if we go to the next slide, I'll talk about that. So um, these were the loads that uh, BPA ultimately studied in this uh, reinforcement study. And so as you can see, Classcanide requested to have seven hundred megawatts studied, uh, Columbia River PUD, we asked for four seventy. Uh, Forest Grove for four fifty and McMinnville Water and Light for four hundred. And uh, just to kind of give this into perspective, so Classcanide's peak is about a hundred and thirty megawatts, so our peak is about a hundred and seven. Uh, Forest Grove's peak's about fifty and McMinnville Water and Light is about a hundred. So what they studied was a significant departure from normal. So trying to see uh, what would need to occur to gain a lot of capacity in um, each one of these respective territories.
Brandon, can I ask you a question really quick? Is McMinnville and Forest Grove the only, like city on? I don't know what the correct term is for their own power.
Uh, they're not the only ones.
There's about ten. Cambie, Ashland, Banden, um, Springfield, so.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so basically, so we looked at a significant load growth. Um, and one thing that we did is we hired a consultant um, to look at uh, what we could possibly see. And so Bessie Johnson is here in Scappus. We looked at kind of what kind of load projections we kind of see in that area. Uh, Don Ice is down in Rainier. And then St. Allen's is obviously the middle of St. Allen, so we kind of put some load spots out there for BPA to study. And um, there were too many iterations of combinations, so BPA decided to solely study the uh, peaks. Uh, that way it would give you kind of the biggest outcome to get a capacity in our service territory. And so the next slide, uh, lo and behold, the results. So that red line uh, that I have drawn up there is the existing one fifteen KB path that goes through our service territory. And uh, the study concluded that we would need a two thirty uh, reinforcement. So basically. And the study concluded that we would need a 230 reinforcement. So basically, upgrade the existing transmission capacity. And so this next slide talks about the projects. So basically, to summarize this up, about 46 miles of transmission, so 230 slash 115. And then two new transformers. And to kind of put this into perspective on timelines a little bit, to make this happen, and let's just hypothetically say you had the funding to do this, and everything was greenlit, ready to go. So those two transformers that would need to be installed in St. Helens, you know, those take anywhere between 30 to 50 months. So three to five years to get once you order them. And then the price tag for this in today's dollars, you know, they roughly throw out there about $100 million to make this project happen.
Hey, Brandon, sorry to cut you off. We are not getting the PowerPoint presentation online. We're just seeing the Microsoft Edge browser.
Well, that's a bummer.
Well, we can always get you a copy later. And Jay.
Okay.
It is in the packet. You have to maybe go online to find the packet.
So the thing that's significant about this is, I'm going to go back just a little bit. So really, in our whole territory, we use 55 megawatts average every day for 20,000 customers. And about three years ago, we had a large solar company that wanted to locate on the Armstrong site and also the Boise site. But they wanted 85 megawatts of power, and we had 35. And so we began this process to figure out how do we grow our, our service territory. And what we've seen is a lot of the new data centers and other industries, even, even Project Spice, you need 50 megawatts of power. So the 115 system we had was too small. So what this whole process was about, as Brandon said, was we hired somebody to tell us what is the capacity for all the industrial property, and that's where the 470 megawatts came from. So and that was, this was studied by Bonneville's best transmission planner. So these are good numbers. And so one of the reasons we wanted to come back and see you is the last time, you know, we weren't real clear on what, what improvements are going to be necessary, and two, how much it's going to cost. And we finally have got to that point where as Brandon just mentioned, it's going to cost about $100 million. So just want to give that background, that little bit of that background.
Check. Right, yeah, check. Yeah, I mean, how does that, how do you pay for that? Who pays for that type of?
Well, we heard you had a renewal this year.
Yeah.
Just kidding. No, that's, that's a discussion we're going to have. I think we have more to our presentation, but that's, that's the $100 million question.
Yeah. I mean, that is actually where we are at in this whole process. And you know, one thing that I will try to articulate here is that this study was a high-level study. I mean, detailed, but high-level. There's still need to do more redundancy studies to make sure that this would actually work to facilitate what we want. But where we are at, if you actually go to two slides, that's okay. Yeah, go to the next one. Next, the next steps is cost allocation. Who pays for what? And so, you know, essentially, BPA's line of thinking typically is that, you know, a little bit of cost cause or cost payer. But if it tend, if the projects can benefit the entire network, and what I mean by network is not just Columbia River PUD's service territory, that they will rate base some of that. So, you know, and in my opinion, this project that we proposed does help the entire network because the substation at the upper south end of the territory, actually, north end of the territory, sorry, is Austin. And there's this flow gate up there that's called South of Austin congestion. So south of that, it is congested. So in my opinion, that our project that we've talked about here would help that congestion. And so our hope is that with that information, that BPA lends itself towards making it network cost. Now, you know, BPA probably won't say 100% of it is network cost. You know, they also want us to have some skin in the game, right? They don't want to do something for nothing and not have load show up. Last thing they want to do is construct, you know, $100 million asset, and it be for nothing.
So historically, Bonneville would, you come in with a project and you say, hey, we need 20 megawatts of power, and Bonneville will say, okay, let's put you in this L L I R process. And we went through all those processes. And and for the larger projects, you know, we're here in six to 10 years, more like 10 years, before they can upgrade the system. So while we're, but if you didn't have, if you didn't have a company that was looking to locate, or that wasn't patient to stay that six to 10 years, then the project didn't go forward. And Bonneville said, well, you know, it's not a live project. And what we've told them clearly is, we've had a number of these companies that if not for not having more power, would have come here. So you need to take a look at your model and making decisions. And the, and the good news is that, well, I don't know if it's good news, but over the last four to six months, Bonneville has taken their whole process about trying to prioritize projects and put it on hold because they had been flooded by, they got 63 gigawatts of, which is 63,000 megawatts of power in request for new service. A lot of it's solar generators over near. And so they just physically didn't have the staff or manpower to go through that. So they really are in the process of redoing their planning process. And Brandon's been pretty active in that committee, and I think it's going to be a lot more user-friendly. It's going to actually look at a community and say, hey, look at the potential. This community has 500 acres of industrial property. We know there's going to be growth here. We need to get ahead of those improvements. And, and so, so I think things are going the right way, but the problem is the federal government. It's not like you guys, you need a well, you go out and drill it. They have 15,000 miles of other transmission lines, and they have, they have the same pressure all over the state. So you know, with the, with the the whole new data center, artificial intelligence, all of those require power. And so, you know, the biggest challenge is going to be where, where's Bonneville going to be finding that? We we're in a process where we're going to be signing a 20-year contract with Bonneville, and they have a requirement to serve us, but they've been, they've been flooded by, by this, as, as have other communities in, in Forest Grove. They had a data center that wanted to go there, and they decided, the company decided, is it just go ahead and start building the, their plant, this, this $100 million data center, even though they don't have a commitment for power with the hope that that Bonneville's going to figure this out. So.
Mike, quick question. First, thanks, Brandon. You forgot to be in here. Because this is a really consequential decision. And it's important for our future, obviously. But so, Brandon, you mentioned that some of us would be rate-based. So would that, would that be just this particular territory that would or they could spread out all over the Bonneville service area?
It would be paid out over the entire Bonneville service territory.
Okay, that's huge.
That's when, that's when I say rate base, or BPA trying to rate base it all of their customers.
That's huge. Now, this is the second question.
And we're waiting for that answer. That's a critical, you're right, it's a critical, and we're, you know, we're waiting for them to tell us, yeah, this, these improvements will be or will not be rate-based, so.
So the second question is, is so if we start marching down this road, and then Bonneville gets sold off by the new administration, what, what happens then?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, I can't speculate that much.
We own that system, and I, you know, there's a lot of debt that's associated with whips and other whoops. And so, you know, the very small chance that it'll ever be sold. And there's the nice thing about Bonneville, they serve six states, and they have, even though they have so much political clout in Oregon, with our delegation, Idaho does, Montana does. So we don't expect that to happen.
Very comfortable there.
Yeah.
We have 35 megawatts available roughly now.
35 to 50.
And are any of the new facilities in St. Helens taking much of that?
Arcadia's going to take some.
Yeah, I think our, you know, our overall capacity depends on which transmission company you ask. You know, BPA says about 35, PG says about 10. Somewhere in between those two is probably accurate.
So we have some. So smaller businesses houses us stuff.
And I would say, so one thing that I probably didn't articulate very well last time is, so BPA plans for, I would say, our historical load growth. And that means like new homes, small businesses, small commercial. That stuff is taken care of, and BPA's long-term transmission planning. It's the, you know, large chunky things that are not. It would be like your new industrial customer that wants 50 megawatts, or, you know, anything really over 10 is likely not in, well, is not in BPA's forecast forward.
That's what's hurting us. That our industrial site, we're, we're limiting the big customers that want a lot of the power. We're like, well, we need small, one, two, three megawatts. Well, they, they don't want to pay for that big a property. And so it's, yeah, what comes first? You know, you build it, they will come, or be interesting to see how this gets done or paid for.
Well, you know, I heard earlier in one of your interviews, and by the way, I think you've got two really solid members. Glad to see that you're moving forward strong. But you talked about what can we do to bring companies here? And I, and Brandon and I talked a lot about this. And really, I think what cities, St. Helens, Scapuce, really need to think about is, what kind of industry do you really want, want here, and what can you serve? You have water limitations. We have power limitations, but we still have 35, 40 megawatts, which is fairly significant. You know, you look at somebody like US Gypsum, they use five, and right lineup in Rainier uses what, two or three? So there's a lot of real potential with some smaller sized.
Cascade Tissues used a few.
One.
Yeah.
So that we, we still can, but, but what we, what we've been talking about, what we're actually going to be putting in our budget is is some significant money to do some targeted marketing. You know, you talked about trade shows. There's, there's site selector shows. I don't know if the state puts much effort into that, but you know, we're going to be working with some of our other partners to figure out, how can we go after some of those companies that actually fit here? How can we, because honestly, you know, since Cascades, there has been a, you know, a company that's one to locate, locate here except for Projects Spice. And so, you know, you know, that's how we found Michael Curry here and US Gypsum. You know, you got to go outside and just wait for them to come. They, they need to know we're here. And, you know, we did develop that industrial brochure with the city about three years ago, and it was pretty good. Anyway, I'm getting off script a little bit, but actually, it's really part of, because what Brandon will tell you is that even if we're successful getting Bonneville to move forward with upgrading the system, it's not going to happen tomorrow. It's going to take a handful of years. So what do we do with the lemons that we have? You know, we've got to make lemonade. And the good news is you have one of the best industrial sites in the, in the Northwest. And so you know, one of the things we want to do is continue to work with you in, in marketing what you have, because
Perfect.
Good business.
So I agree with you, Mike, regarding, so we need to really think about what kind of businesses that we have, and then really use, utilize what we currently have. Has there been studies, because I've heard that, for example, in data centers, where there's a lot of electronics, and has, how has it affected the environment, communities? I've heard of stories that, do we really want a huge plant like that, and then have it affect, you know, residents? So I agree that, I agree with you as far as utilizing what we have, knowing what kind of businesses we want to bring in. I can see this, you know, if we ever get to that point, 10 years, but that's like $10 million, kind of breaking it down, $10 million a year for 10 years. So do we want to do that?
Yeah. And by the time you get to that 10-year mark, it's probably going to be like 200.
Yeah. Well, you you know.
Has there been any studies? I'm sorry, my question, I don't have.
Not that I'm super aware of on, you know, the environmental impacts of data centers. You know, I will just say a little bit of my perspective is that I would say data centers is probably a little bit of your industry of today. You know, you may not think of it like that, as, you know, you're typically focused on like manufacturing. Well, now a lot of it's data mining, right? What can you do with that to move things forward? And I mean, you know, the benefits that a DNR could bring, you know, while they may not necessarily be jobs, you know, they bring other benefits to the community. It's maybe a little, it can be impactful, I should say.
Well, you know, up in Northern Wasco and Umatilla, they have a number of data, data centers that have located up there, Amazon, Google. And in Northern Wasco, they love having Google be in part of their community because they have a fairly significant franchise fee to cities. I mean, the cities are in really good shape because of that. And and it does, there's a lot of multiplier industries that go, go there. But the thing that's insignificant to note is that if somebody walks in our doors, we have to serve them. That, you know, we tell them, well, it might take 10 years, and you're going to have to pay for all the infrastructure, but we have that requirement. But also in the Google situation up in, and then also in Umatilla, they, they may, they pay for all of the upgrades necessary, and they pay for all the power. And it doesn't really have an impact on the local ratepayers. Actually, it, in some cases, keeps the rates lower. And so, you know, that's just some other.
We don't really have a choice if they want to come. We don't necessarily have, maybe we don't have the water, and right now, we don't have enough power to do 100 megawatts unless they want to pay for it and can take the lead time. So if they get one, then they're obviously willing to pay for it, and somehow the water is.
Right. And I can speak to that a little bit, coming from Umatilla County and working with Amazon specifically. Just as a reference, and Mike is 100% correct, they, they put their money's worth in for everything. I know Hermiston actually is just annexing another 800 acres and for data center complexes. So that's a recent thing, but, you know, they're even looking in for renewable energies. The big thing that's in the news right now is the small modular units for nuclear reactors that they're working out of Tri-Cities, and Amazon's helping fund some of that. So there is a lot of opportunity with industries. You just have to make sure your code and your partnership with them is there. There are other benefits and cons. I mean, yeah, the data centers themselves don't typically have a lot of staffing, but they bring a lot of secondary jobs to the place, security and other things. So it would just be, yeah, we have to serve who comes and who buys, but there, there is a silver lining in either way of how it goes. And I don't, I wouldn't say it's glum, gloom and doom with data centers, just how we go forward with that partnership, make sure it's solid.
And that's PUDs required to serve, is the city required to serve a business that says we need so many gallons of water? And we're like, we can't provide that. Are we required to work a plant and eventually provide, figure out a way to provide it?
Well, yeah, for example, typically, as an example with Amazon, I know that with Hermiston, they've been working with a regional water solution to where they have the county and Umatilla City, and they're all putting a ton of money coming out of the Columbia River to develop their water flow. And so they, they are incremental into solving their own problem. We can't provide what we don't have. So that typically with development, that would be, well, this is what we can do, but anything beyond that, or here's what's reasonable. We have to leave room for other people as well. But beyond that, you need to put forward the cash to do anything further than that.
As Brandon likes to say, cost cause, cost pay.
Right.
So, you know, they come in, we they need to pay for the, the upgrade. That's, that's our philosophy, too.
Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Surprise. I know Spice was close and got us thinking, and, and now kind of start over again and go find that next one. But if anything changes, if there's any new advancements, please keep us posted.
We will definitely do so and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. I was wondering if this was, sorry, do you know if the people that were here with this next person? I know it was kind of late. I felt bad, but.
I know, I did, too. I spoke with them.
Okay. I didn't, can't really move them ahead where we were. Okay, we're moving on. Number eight, request by Carmen Hawn for early connection prior to annexation to City Water and Sewer Services. DDD Development Director, L'Oreal Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, actually Carmen was here, um, with her father earlier. Um, he got tired, so they went home. This, uh, the city received a emailed request on August seventh for early annex or early connection to city water and sewer services prior to annexation for a property at three, four, one oh six East Columbia Avenue. Uh, the letter stated that, uh, the property was recently purchased for her ninety-three-year-old father. Uh, they did have that tested well water. It is unsafe to drink, uh, and requested the city allow the property to, uh, make that early connection. Additionally, the planning department was contacted by the county sanitarian, um, who alerted the city that the septic tank on the property was failing and would need to be, uh, repaired or replaced in the future. Uh, it is still usable, but they cannot issue any kind of a repair permit if the property, uh, is, um, legally available to connect and the sewer line is physically available along their frontage. So, uh, both of those criteria are met. Um, the, there is sewer along the frontage and they are abutting city limits, so she cannot, the county sanitarian cannot issue a septic repair permit. When we get into these situations, uh, most recently it was in twenty twenty. Um, we have relied on a few sections of the Scapus Municipal Code to allow discretion for council to allow early hookup. Um, specifically for water, that is in, I've listed the chapters out here, thirteen point oh four point oh two oh. Uh, where it does say that the city will not allow connections outside of city, uh, limits, except for in health and safety reasons. Again, we have that reason stated in that email that was sent to us. Uh, they are, her father is still using the water for cleaning and laundry and such, but, um, they are using bottled water for his drinking water. Um, he's a little, um, forgetful, so she's worried that he might forget to drink, you know, the bottled water and wants again, early connection for sewer. Uh, thirteen point one two point oh nine oh gives council some discretion. Um, to modify rules for sewer connections. Uh, so long as it's within the requirements of state statutes and city charter. The city charter is silent on this. There is a, um, ORS two, 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 one, one, five, says the city may enter into a contract with a landowner whereby a landowner consents to eventual annexation of their property in exchange for extra territorial city services. In this case, that would be sewer and water. So, um, had discussions with the city attorney, city manager, city engineer and public works director. Um, consensus was to forward this to the council for consideration. Again, the last one we did was in twenty twenty. Um, also for a property on East Columbia Avenue. I did work with the city attorney on drafting an annexation agreement. Um, basically this contract or annexation agreement specifies that the landowner has ninety days in which to make application for annexation to the city and that they would pay for half of their annexation fee at the time they sign this agreement and the other half at the time they submit their land use application. Um, Carmen Hawn, who was here tonight with her father, uh, is aware of the annexation agreement she would be asked to sign. She is in agreement with that. Uh, we've already held the pre, uh, pre-application meeting for annexation. She's hired her planning consultant to help her through that process. She's been made aware of the fees associated with the SDCs, um, et cetera, to connect to our city services uh, and is on board with all of that. Staff, I have provided some options here. Um, and again, by allowing early connection to water and sewer, council can alleviate any ongoing health and safety concerns while still having assurance that the annexation will occur. Again, um, annexation takes a while. There's, um, prior notice required, um, to the state and, uh, one planning commission meeting and two council meetings. So it does ta, it's a, it can be a lengthy process. The staff recommends that council direct the city manager to enter into an annexation agreement with the owner, allowing early connection to city water and sewer surfaces in conformance with ORS two, 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 one, one, five, using the discretion given to council by section thirteen oh four oh two oh and thirteen one two oh nine oh. Happy to answer any questions you have. Um, these are just, again, timing issues of, yes, our, our code obviously wants people to be in city limits before they connect, uh, but because of health and safety issues, we would consider this annexation agreement to meet that requirement.
I think this is exactly why they give us the ability to do that. Yes, Council President Miller.
I just have one confirmation question. So there's no properties in between the subject property and where the city limits currently is, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So if you look on page fifty-nine of your packet, it's a budding city limits on the west and it's a budding also East Columbia to the north, which is also city limits. So it's a budding on two of the four sides.
Okay. So there's no other, basically what I'm getting is there's no other properties in between.
There's, yeah, there's nothing preventing annexation. It's just a matter of timing.
The house next to them on their left is in city limits, but beyond that, there's a few that aren't.
That's correct.
But Columbia, the city limit line goes all the way down the road.
So everything else is?
No, no.
There's nothing else that needs to be annexed to annex that property.
They're touching on a couple of sides. How soon can they get water hooked up?
So once they sign the annexation agreement, meet our conditions by cutting us a chunk for half the annexation fee. Uh, it's just a matter of them getting their plumber on board and, um, issuing plumbing permits.
Sewer shortly thereafter.
Correct. That's right.
Counselor Holmes.
Sorry, it took me a minute to get off mute. Um, Lori, have we spoken to the, uh, property owner next to them, to the, to the right? To see, do they have similar problems? Like if we have to go through a multi-stage process for the annexation, which I, we're, uh, for the, for the hookup. I'm supportive of that. Is there a benefit in seeing if others in the area, um, would maybe need something similar?
It's typically, uh, they would come to us if they have issues. We don't typically go and ask them, you know, what condition their utilities are in or if, if they're having anything, um, going on. What I do know is that this particular property was vacant for about three to four years. Uh, with nobody using either the well or the sewer. So I don't know to what extent, uh, any of that had to do with, you know, the well kind of fouling up, um, or what have you. But to answer your question, no, we have not contacted, uh, nearby property owners. However, once, as soon as this is, um, annexed in and even now that property owner, uh, to the right, to the east is still eligible to annex if they wanted to because their frontage abouts East Columbia Avenue and that, that right of way is in city limits.
Nina, none of these are in our immediate, uh, fifty-year plan as our number two choices of bringing into the.
Well, these are already in the UGB. Yeah, they're already in. That's right.
I'll make the motion, please. We're done.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, move that council direct the city manager to enter into an annexation agreement with the owner, allowing early connection to city water and city sewer services in conformance with ORS two, 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 uh, one, one, five, using discretion given to council by section thirteen zero four zero two zero and thirteen one two zero nine zero of the Scapus Municipal Code.
Motion by Council President Miller. Direct city manager to enter doing annexation agreement with the owner, allowing early connection to city water and sewer services in conformance with ORS two, two, two dot one, one, five, using discretion given to council by section thirteen oh four oh two oh and thirteen one two oh nine oh of the SDC. Any second?
I'll second.
Second by, yeah, make sure I get this right. Counselor Markey, uh, needing more discussion? Seeing not all those favor state by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. It was a great staff report. I didn't really have any questions. They were all answered in there.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. This might be why you're here, right? I was waiting. Number nine.
Standing up to say a wake.
Yeah.
Ordinance number nine, two, three, and ordinance of the city of Scapus amending Scapus Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point two four, regulating system development charges for residential fire sprinklers. Again, Community Development Director Laurie Oliver Joseph. This is a public hearing, so if you have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight I'm bringing to you an ordinance that responds to House Bill three, five oh five. This has an effective date of January first, two thousand twenty-six, which prohibits a local government from imposing a new or increased system development charge for the installation of a residential sprinkler system or for the increased capacity of a water meter for the sprinkler system. Uh, with a number of new homes, uh, permits being issued, uh, shortly that are going to require a fire sprinkler system. Community Development Center staff wish to amend the municipal code to address this early rather than waiting, uh, until January. I provided some background just on system development charges in general. Um, but I'll just touch on a few items here. Um, connections to the municipal water system are based on the water meter size that's installed as our wastewater SDCs. Um, again, because there's a direct correlation with how large a water meter is and how much wastewater you would be, uh, generating. So those, those fees are, are connected. A typical home, uh, most often requires a three-quarter inch meter, uh, when it does not need a fire sprinkler system. Uh, for a home that does require the sprinkler system, uh, the typical water meter size then increases to a one inch to meet the fire flow demand as well as the residential, uh, needs. And so the city, uh, previously kept the three-quarter inch meter cost the same as the one-inch meter uh, through the adoption of resolution fourteen dash twenty-one. However, that was an amendment to a fee resolution. So it was repealed as soon as the next fee resolution got adopted. Um, and so to respond to this House bill and to memorialize the policy in a long-term manner, we would like to just um, get this into the municipal code. So it would fit in chapter thirteen point two four, system development charges. Um, I have included the language here, um, middle to bottom of page sixty-one. And I've also included, um, the whole municipal chapter thirteen point two four, so you can see how it fits, but I'll just read the new language. Uh, if a customer installs the National Fire Protection Association thirteen D residential fire sprinkler system, the city shall not charge the customer SDCs in connection with number one, the system's installation or two, the difference between the increased capacity of a water meter required by the system and the capacity of the water meter that would otherwise be required without the system installed. If the customer subsequently adds additional fixture units necessitating the need for a larger water meter to meet its residential needs beyond what would be required without the fire sprinkler system installed, the customer will be required to pay the difference of the water and wastewater SDC for the larger meter at the current rate than in effect. So staff worked with the city attorney on the appropriate language to use, referencing the specific type of, uh, residential fire sprinkler system that was mentioned in, uh, the House bill. And then the last sentence, um, was added to, to bring additional clarity, um, to satisfy the public works director who wanted to make sure that if the house were to receive, say, a very substantial, um, increase in say sinks and toilets and bathrooms and what have you, that would necessitate a larger meter just to meet residential needs, not including the fire sprinkler, that the city's still capturing that higher SDC. Um, we're not leaving that money on the table. So it, it, it covers, uh, what the House bill is amending as well as local concerns um, on our end. Um, I did provide here what the current combined SDC fees are for water and sewer. So for a three-quarter inch, the combined water and wastewater SDC would be sixteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, and for a one-inch water meter, uh, that would be twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents for a total difference of nearly eleven thousand dollars. So again, uh, by keeping the cost of a one-inch meter the same as a three-quarter, in the case of fire sprinklers, this means that the developer is not going to pass that higher cost than on to the home buyer because they're not going to eat it. It's going to get passed on. So this just, again, helps Scapus to make sure we're addressing housing costs by not, um, increasing those fees any more than would need to be. Uh, fiscal impact, uh, while the city is required to make this change, the fiscal impact, obviously it's dependent on the number of houses that would need that larger meter. Uh, I know that this fiscal year, that's going to be six, uh, in the Dutch Canyon Estates Phase Four subdivision, which is pulling permits now. And staff doesn't know when building permits will be issued for the Buxton Estates, but all forty-four homes will be required to have sprinklers. Uh, that's based on the fire code and conditions of approval. So staff recommends that council adopt ordinance nine, two, three, thereby amending SMC thirteen point two four point one hundred as shown in exhibit A to comply with House Bill three, five, oh, five.
Thank you. And you said this, this has to go into effect January. It would go into effect January.
It would default, it would go into effect January first, but.
Do anything in January or is it automatically go into?
Once this, uh, we wouldn't need to do anything January, uh, if we were to charge for that difference, we would be in violation of that House bill. Um, what this will do though is put it into our development code. We don't need to do anything to our fee schedule. It would be a policy that's codified in our code and we would know not to charge for that.
But, but our ordinance would be before January, correct?
Our ordinance would go into effect is upon the second reading and adoption. That's right.
So Lori, I don't, I don't understand the value to the city for doing this early since we're going to be doing by, by three, five, three, five, oh, five, January first anyway. So we potentially could lose between fifty and five hundred thousand dollars.
That's past that, that, yes, to, to your point, Joel. The city has always, has previously had a policy not to charge that extra and uh, you know, I think Jeff's going to make a case here for, for why it wouldn't be a good idea, but um, that is also money that's going to get passed on to the home buyer and increase our home costs in the city.
Isn't it true that they go at market value and so that, that's just as to the profit margin for the developer?
I'm pretty sure it's going to go on to, yeah.
Real estate market, they go at market value and they, and sometimes you have bidding wars for houses. And so, so I, I'm not sure that's a, a, a rational argument.
If the staff is done with, um, their presentation, do we want to hear from?
Yeah, it is a public hearing, so I could open the public hearing. Yeah. To hear from, um, communities. Is that how I do, open up this now open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not land use, much easier.
So if anybody would like to speak, for now, hold the peace. Come on.
It's loud. I'll show you the, sorry. Mr. Mayor, Council President, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to speak, uh, about this ordinance. Uh, as I get started, I just want to point out a couple key things that hopefully will help influence your decision. First and foremost, got to thank, uh, city staff. When you look at your council goals, number one, which is all about communication and collaboration. Uh, we spent a lot of time collaborating on this and we have in the past, uh, which I think is important. The fire district's role is all about community risk reduction. And this ordinance falls in line with community risk reduction, which also touches on, uh, council goal number three, which is health and safety. So when we look at new construction in communities, uh, the big challenge for the fire service is we can't put those fires out fast enough. Um, the, the homes are built with engineered timber. So you're seeing smaller dimensional lumber, uh, a lot of glue lamb, uh, uh, construction. And when those things come under fire, they burn super fast. And we can't get there fast enough to, to slow the fire, the spread of fire down. So putting sprinklers in these new homes is really important. Now, we are, uh, conditioned into what homes that we can put sprinkler systems into. Uh, there are very specific conditions that allow us to make that as a requirement. And so we are very judicious when that happens, but, uh, to, uh, uh, Counselor Huguenz's question about, you know, passing costs on, historically what happens is people will either lose out on an opportunity to actually finance their home because the, the builders do pass on the costs. And the cost of a sprinkler system is anywhere from six thousand to ten thousand dollars, depending on the size of the home. Uh, a lot of times we, you know, we argue with the developers about, you know, what's more important? A granite countertop, uh, you know, a set of stainless steel. you know, a set of stainless steel appliances or something that's going to basically have a firefighter on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is what you get with the sprinkler system. Going back to our conditions for when we require these, one of the significant impacts to our community is anytime we have a fire loss, the insurance companies look at that fire loss and that affects our potential rating within the community. Right now, we are at an ISO Class 3, which is probably the lowest you could see in a community our size. I want to say there's about 1,600 fire agencies out of 30,000 in the country that are at an ISO Class 3.
Jeff, can you clarify that one is the highest?
Yeah, one is the best rating.
There you go.
10, 10 means you have no fire protection, one is the best. We're really working towards getting us to a two because every time you drop in points, the lower the insurance rating is for the community. Now, not all insurers follow ISO, but everybody does pay attention to fire loss. So by having a sprinkler system in these newer homes, it significantly reduces the impact of fire on our community, which, you know, helps us all out financially. So the fire district strongly supports the city staff in their proposal with this ordinance. Because again, it really goes to the importance of the health and safety of our community.
Thank you. One question I do have, you said there's limited amount of houses that you can require sprinklers. Do developers tend to try to stay right below that so they don't have to put them in?
All the time.
So that's kind of their thinking is, and other things too, but they can cut costs. I don't have to put a $10,000 sprinkler in if I make it this way, a little bit smaller, a little bit something.
They have tried to do other workarounds and to help you understand the condition. So any access to a structure that is over 15% is an automatic trigger for sprinkler systems. When we look at the Buxton property, because there's only one way into the property and one way out, and there's more than 30 homes, it's an automatic code requirement that we require sprinklers. If the home is bigger than 3,600 square feet, that's another trigger for when we look at sprinkler systems. And the reason for that is 3,600 square foot home is essentially one water tender and a fire engine. So anything that requires more water than one water tender and one fire engine, we need help. And that's where the code helps out.
Do they show the saving, how sprinkler system helps the houses around it too? I mean, prevent more damage by getting fire into the other houses because it puts it out quicker?
That is in the county code. So depending on, you know, some of the driveway conditions, the county will require sprinklers. And the thought process is if they can prevent the spread of the house fire into the interface zone, then we can limit the amount of damage to surrounding properties as well as surrounding homes.
Vehicles and garages?
And vehicles and garages.
Yeah, I just have a clarification. So this is something for new construction, housing. And what about, like, somebody wants to, it's, the structure's old, but they're kind of rebuilding it or remodeling?
Major remodel, something kicking in?
Exactly.
That will really depend on the conditions or the occupancy classification of the building. For example, one of the triggers that we have run into in our community is if somebody wants to turn a residential structure into a daycare, they're, depending on what they're doing with the daycare, that may trigger a sprinkler provision. But there again, it really depends on what the building official is going to require in terms of it being a commercial sprinkler system versus a residential sprinkler system.
And you make that decision or does the city?
That would be the building official, but it's also the project. And I think what, you know, Laurie and the city is proposing is we're talking strictly residential structures.
Very specific type of sprinkler system.
Like if you're a 3,000 square foot house without a sprinkler and you want to add 600 square feet, it'll probably trigger, you're now at 3,600.
There would have to be other conditions. We try not to impact our community in that way. But the newer construction, it's easier to put in that type of a system than a retrofit.
So Jeff, so Laurie too. So a developer, unless they're required to put a sprinkler system in by statute, by code, they're not going to put it in, correct?
Right. And that's one of the reasons why we want to incentivize them on that meter size because the reality is that $10,000 is a huge negotiating chip, not only for us on the fireside, but in some ways for the developer or the homeowner when they say this is what we want.
But I'm going back to that same question, though. The developer is not going to put sprinklers in unless they're required to do it, correct?
That is correct. Or the homeowner wants it.
Or the homeowner, yeah. So someone's going to pay for it. But yeah, so that's my conundrum here is, you know, I value the sprinkler system, but they're, an ordinary homeowner isn't going to put them in. And so I'm looking at the loss of the SDC charges potentially over the next three months. And so that's a significant amount of money.
Counselor Holmes?
Yeah, I'm with Counselor Haugen. A little confused on the timing of this. If this is naturally going to just take effect January 1, I'm uncertain as to why we are trying to move this forward at this time unless we're trying to create an exception for some development that we know is impending on the horizon, which I would imagine these developers already started their planning process understanding that these SDCs were going to be something they have to deal with. So I'm not sure why we would change course just to benefit them at, I guess, it would, you know, detracting from otherwise, you know, the taxpayers and the tax base.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, real world situation, a couple of the, two of the homes that were required to have sprinklers in the Dutch Canyon, the contractor, I don't want to say tried to cut corners, but they tried to see if they could make the system work on a three-quarter inch meter and it failed. And the reason they tried to stay with the three-quarter inch meter is because they didn't want to have to pass that cost on to the customer. And we found out through, you know, the acceptance testing that it failed. You know, they thought they had it, but it was honestly that one inch, or sorry, the three-quarter inch meter that kept them from getting to where they needed to be. So, you know, while there is planning, and I understand that it could be a loss to the city and potential revenue. Again, I'll point back to goal three, health and safety. You know, we're trying to promote health and safety of our community by incentivizing people to put in these sprinkler systems. And, you know, going back to the report that, you know, Laurie put in the packet, there really is no impact when you look at the actual water usage that is not going to happen between that three-quarter inch and the one inch. The only reason they have that one-inch meter is to get the fire flow requirements for the most remote head in that sprinkler system. That's, that's why you have that one-inch meter. It's not because they're going to be using more water. And I think everybody-
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So, so the reason why the one-inch meter cost is that much higher is because traditionally, or the reason why is that you would have a need for that much more capacity of water.
That I understand.
So they are, so the customer is paying for the actual physical one-inch meter cost. It's just that the SDC charge that they're being charged is kept the same as what it would be if they didn't need the sprinklers. So there's still, we're still getting covered for our guys' time to do the connection. We're getting covered for the meter itself.
Yeah, it can come January 1st at the most point.
Right. If I could speak to logistics of this real quick and to answer your question or your statement, Counselor Holmes, this ordinance was not brought because of any developer, but because of House Bill, House Bill 3505 was brought to our attention and that is going to go into effect in January. So we just jumped on it as soon as we were notified. And really, it's not three months. It still takes another reading and then three days after that to go into effect. So we're looking between, we're looking at a month, month and a half before it goes to effect anyways. And part of that is just getting on that to get it done so we don't have to do it in January and amend that. The other part of that was we were already having internal discussions because there was a conflict in our procedure anyways. Because as Laurie had mentioned, we had a resolution that already addressed this and the process was already stated and that's how we'd been operating. I was the one who actually kind of pointed out, or with Dave, there's a conflict in our procedure or our fee schedule compared to our ordinance that hadn't been resolved because of that, the amendment that was rescinded on. They didn't really think about that. They thought they were still the process. And so we were already, we were already having before House Bill 3505 came out, trying to look at how we were going to do this. We were already having these discussions. Then they came out with this. We're like, well, that answers the question of how we move forward because it's already going to affect. And since we already worked on this, we just put it forward. Like I say, really, it's about a month, month and a half. I mean, if the council wants to wait that extra month. On the developer side, I would say they know it's going to affect in January. They're just going to wait for the application until January. So it just slows down the development by a month, month and a half.
Yeah. What's the, give me the scenario, what that either their, their revenue or their loss or our revenue and our loss? What is that? What, a month or month and a half? What does that look like?
I have a more direct question that I think is going to answer. Can I ask?
Sure.
Okay. So by what you just said with dates, so we're looking at October 15th and then November 15th, basically two months. So are we saying that November, about November 15th would be the effective date?
Yeah, if this was adopted on October 15th, then it would be November 15th being effective.
Okay. So what, what do we anticipate the revenue loss from the SDC charges to be between November 15th and the end of the year?
If I were to put my guess on there, I would say no revenue loss because if you want to affect on November 15th or to January 1st, the developer's just going to look at that and say, when do I put my application in? Because they're not going to want to pay an extra $10,000 when they're already working on other houses. They can finish their work there. There could be the potential that I say, well, I got to get this done, have a buyer who needs this now. So there is the potential loss, but with most developers I've worked with, they would say, I'll wait to put my application a month. I work with my other houses right now.
So I get it and I think you're probably right. But just hypothetically, if, let's say they didn't know about it and they push forward, what would be the approximate revenue loss between the?
There may be one or two. Like I said, there's only six in the entire subdivision for Dutch Canyon Phase Four. So we're talking maybe one or two. They're not, they're not pulling them all at once, in other words.
What are the chances that Buxton runs this through with the plans through before?
Oh, no, no, no. Way too early.
Okay. But you list that as a possibility here.
I said I don't know when they'll issue permits, but all of those homes do require sprinklers. I said for this fiscal year, the only ones I would expect are Dutch Canyon Phase Four.
And if we vote, tonight's first reading, we vote on it next reading, October 4th, then it would go 30 days from that day, November 4thish.
I mean, I mean, just applying a realistic analysis to it, I agree with what you're saying, that the developer's probably going to wait until the first of the year. And even if they weren't, we're probably looking at, from what we're talking about here, what we're hearing is maybe two homes.
Maybe.
Okay. And I'm looking for a motion to adopt. We don't vote, we won't vote on it. So if we have a first and a second, we'll leave it at that point, come back at our next meeting and then vote. So if you, if between now and then, something comes up, we can discuss it at this time. But I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 923.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel President Miller?
I move that council adopt ordinance 923, thereby amending SCAPU's municipal code 1324100 as shown in Exhibit A to comply with House Bill 3505.
I've got a motion by Council President Miller to adopt ordinance 923. Therefore, thereby amending SCAPU's municipal code 1324100 as shown in Exhibit A to comply with House Bill 3505 any second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Counsel Marquis, a second. Okay, we'll leave it at that and come back for a second reading at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry to keep you so late.
Yeah. If you get close to nine during this, you might want to make a motion. Before the end of the meeting, Tyler, is this still what you're wanting?
We want to check in with you to make sure this is still what you envisioned.
Okay. Unfortunately, we just lost half of our special group here, our team, Kim. So we're going to have to, someone will pick up Slack and help you as much as needed. Really appreciate what we've done so far. But we still have, going back into our work session now, the City Manager Performance Assessment Tool, Functional Area in Performance Assessment. Kim, Counselor Holmes, if you'd like to take it.
Yeah. So I guess I'll give a little bit of kind of background on how we arrived here. I do want to speak to the public comment that was offered earlier around why the City Manager Performance Assessment Tool is being looked at at this time. We have been operating off of a prior assessment tool. And I know that this council, in particular, we've gone through a couple of cycles of it. We've always struggled with it because it, with our mayor or our council and city manager form of government, the tool that we had frankly asked for assessment areas that we as council don't have real good visibility into those performance areas. And so we felt that we couldn't, using that tool, offer a meaningful evaluation. So as part of a thoughtful process, that created a couple of touchpoint opportunities to provide feedback to the city manager. This became kind of another element of that and we decided we wanted to revise the assessment tool to be something that's much more meaningful. I do want to recognize, though, that we have, we'll have a couple of new counselors on board. So we may want to reconsider kind of the, the timing for review and feedback of this. So I guess that's one question I would pose. The intent, what we had planned was we were hoping to go through this draft tool. So we, in prior work sessions, we kind of identified the key performance areas we wanted to assess or the functional areas that we wanted to look at. And so that's what you see reflected in budget and finance, leadership, the creating a culture of innovation and accountability, missions and values, communication with staff and relationship building and community relations and our governmental relations. Those were kind of the key functional areas. And then we have the performance areas that we've identified within those. And then we've drafted some questions that we would pose that we would put a rating against to try to assess performance. The idea is this performance tool would be utilized not only by council, but would also be available to staff to offer anonymous feedback and to the city manager themselves to also assess their performance. And then we would look at the ratings kind of side by side, identifying kind of where there's strengths and opportunity areas for development. So that's what we have as the draft tool tonight. Recognizing the time, though, and kind of some of the changeover that we've had on council, I guess, how far do we want to go into review of this today? And if we didn't go deep into review today and allowed the two new counselors some time to review, could we tack this on to the work session that we're having for the 50-year on September 30th? Maybe tack on an extra half hour before then?
I, if I, if I might say a word, I'm thinking we're going to set aside, like, assume six, from six to eight, maybe two hours for the work session so that you all have ample time to look over. The memo staff is going to provide with responses to the questions that were posed. So I guess if there was a desire to add additional time, maybe moving it to five or to 5:30. But I have already set aside the six to eight timeframe for my consultants. So I would need to check if we moved the work session up.
Well, they, and they don't all need to be there. Our portion of the work session for the assessment tool, we can either go eight to nine or as soon as we're done, it'd be long for us, or looking at October 4th, did we have much in that meeting?
No.
One week later?
Pretty open, yeah.
Is it going to cause any, if we do October 4th, is it going to cause any sort of delay for, I don't, I don't think we have anything pending for you. Kim, do you see any reason why we can't do October 4th? It's not going to delay any?
The one thing I'm thinking on it is we can give you any feedback we see tonight just quickly, but if, I don't, if you can maybe reach out or work with Marty and John, just to kind of bring them up to speed. We can't get four of us, but just, or even Ben, just some information, what we're looking at, what we're trying to achieve. So they can have that two weeks kind of review it and come back. I know their experiences are pretty extensive and love to hear from them on it.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable. And I don't think we need to, I think two more- Yeah, I think that would be valuable, and I don't think we need to, I, I think two more weeks would add to quality feedback in the process. If everyone agrees.
I'm just trying to look for my, uh, my next agenda, but yeah, I think we can make time for it October fourth.
You mean October sixth?
Yeah.
Do you want to come in on Saturday? Okay, well, October sixth, is there anything in there? I do really like what you guys have done so far, I tried to look at it as a staff, uh, too, and, and see that we could get some good information back from them. Did you have any, want to look, us to look at a little deeper as we look into this?
Uh, well, so I think, uh, one of the, the outcomes of this evening, if we were able to give a substantive, if council were able to give some substantive feedback, we were going to then see if, uh, this were ready to send to, um, perhaps the department heads and the city manager for their input, just to make sure that we've captured all of the key performance areas, but maybe so we don't lose time, is that a step that we would want to take? To get, to gather their feedback over the next two weeks, so we're dealing with everyone's feedback at the same time?
I'm good with that, uh, Counsel President Miller has something.
I'm fine with that, I just have something else, um, just to put out there for thought. Kim, you're already aware of it, because we exchanged an email on it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to close that topic before.
Oh, so is it something a little different?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's related, but different.
Okay, so, um, did anybody have any com, com, you know, anything they want to put on this? I think it's good, if, if it looks good to me, that we can move it to staff and to Ben to take a look at then, and give any feedback. Is that what you're asking, Kim?
Yeah, so I guess if that's, uh, stuff that others are supportive of, um, I would go ahead and ask, um, uh, Ben, would you be able to circulate, uh, this to department heads and ask for them to send me feedback within a week?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can, they can get this out to him tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
So to clarify, you still want feedback, correct, from us?
Yeah, uh, yeah, if you've got some, uh, feedback that you're ready to offer tonight, I guess we can go ahead and capture that. I do want to be mindful of the time, it's also going on eleven o'clock where I'm at, and I've got a full day tomorrow, so, um. Or you can offer feedback via email, and I can continue to integrate that.
I'll do that, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna make the motion now, in the interest of time, Ms. Mayor, I, um, move that council extend the meeting past nine P M.
Council President makes a motion to extend the meeting past nine P M any second. Counsel, Counsel Santiago, any more discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Okay, uh, so real quick, the topic, um, that I wanted to bring up related to the City Manager Performance Assessment Tool. So I, I don't think, if I remember correctly, I was not here, um, during this discussion, so I apologize for that, but I did watch the full, uh, council meeting, uh, to get up to speed on that. And what I wanted to talk about specifically really quick and just throw out there for the other counselors to think about, is the proposed rating skills that y'all had talked about during that meeting was basically a one through five or one through three rating scale, and I, I, I would like us to think a little bit more about just three very specific, uh, rating, um, criterias, and that's needs improvement, meets expectations, and exceeds expectations. The reason is, is because I think the point skills just, um, kind of create confusion and they're open to interpretation. If you just have, very simply, there's, there's no room for misinterpreting needs improvement, meets expectations, or exceeds expectations. I think it's clear, it's concise, um, it's not, and especially as new counselors rotate into, there's going to be different, uh, definitions for each counselor as to what one, two, three, or one, two, three, four, five means. I just think needs improvement, meets expectations, and exceeds expectations are very specific and don't need any further explanation.
Then how do I do two plus?
Meets expectations plus.
All right. So you're, you're, you're grading, you're grading the papers, and you either have to give them an A, a C, or an F?
Two point five.
I get it.
Yeah.
No, I mean, that's what they eat.
Yeah, so this is one of the considerations that we'll need to come back to in the next discussion, is do we have a preference for a three-point rating system or a five-point rating system? I think they both have pros and cons. Um, I, I agree, uh, having three offers some pretty clear and discreet rankings, um, but you are a little bit limited as well.
Well, could I, Kim, just food for thought. Ben, if you're on the receiving end of this, which you are, what is more, what is more meaningful to you? Is it three, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, or needs improvement, meets expectations?
Right, and, and that question was asked in the meeting, too, uh, my, my comment is just that difference between a four and a five is the same to me, I mean, it, it's just, yeah, so to me, I typically more favor the, the three-point scale. Um, it is a preference, but, um, at the same time, if there are benefits or pros and cons that the council sees in the other one, I'm open to either one.
If we're not adding them up and doing an average, or doing that, you know, like we've done in the past, I like how you're optimistic by saying four or five, what's the difference?
Well, I mean, what's the difference between exceeds and greatly exceeds? I mean, it's pretty ambiguous, it's, at that point, it's no, I exceeded expectations typically.
Are we not going to do an average with the one, two, three?
To me, that brings away, you're diluting the different categories if you do that.
The one, two, three?
Yeah, because if you, we have different categories, each of them are equally important, important, excuse me. And if you're giving then an overall rating, then it's, it's kind of, I don't know how to, to phrase it, it just, I think that each category needs to be on its own merits, really, and if you just do a total of, and that's supposed to mean something, then what does it really mean?
If you get a two point five, you're like, okay, I'm above, you know, I'm doing okay, but what if there was a one in there?
Exactly.
Still need to, you know, or needs improvement, you need to address that, so an average doesn't really.
Doesn't show you the opportunity areas, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the strengths.
Okay, let's, I, I'll add that into my paperwork, you know, needs improvement, meets expectation, or exceed those expectations, we can talk about, think about it. Get back to Kim with any thoughts on it, and, um, and if there's questions, like, um, questions that we're able to ask, yeah. You'll get some feedback from Ben and staff, and, um, be ready to go, if you want some more help, if you do want to incorporate one other person, just to bounce ideas back, um, let's think of somebody that, um, can maybe help replace Counselor Jacob's spot there.
Yeah, if anyone else would like to, to step up and collaborate on this, I'd be happy to, to work with you.
Great, okay, are we good?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
We're gonna, we're gonna, um, do you want, um, we're gonna just go through quickly calendar? We, I was gonna say, you could give us your update, Kim, and that way, if you have to, um, end it anytime you can.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm happy to go first, uh, I guess just, um, big thank you to Counselor Jacobs. Um, it was certainly unexpected news, but I, uh, you know, respect her decisions and have really appreciated her contributions to, to council, it's always been very thoughtful, um, and respectful dialogue, and, um, yeah, uh, have enjoyed my time, so I wish her well, and I look forward to working with, uh, both Marty and John and Tyler. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, um, let me get to the calendar real quick. Thursday, September eighteenth, E D C meeting at noon, farmer's market every day in September, two more, uh, nine to two. We have out of the darkness walk on September twentieth, planning commission scheduled for seven P M, September twenty-fifth. October, we have a run with Neil, October fourth, uh, council work session at six P M on October sixth, followed by council meeting at seven P M, I didn't see it on there, but we do have a work session on September thirtieth, six P M to eight, fifty-year plan, uh, work session. Uh, council work session, six P M, October twentieth, followed by council meeting at seven P M. E D C planning at noon on October twenty-third, followed by planning commission, October, uh, seven P M, October twenty-third in downtown, Scapu's business trick or treat, three to five on October twenty-fourth, October thirty-first. Uh, update, city manager Ben Burgener?
Yeah, as mentioned earlier by Joel, just reminded that League Organ Cities, uh, annual conference in Portland this year is the first weekend of October that's coming up. If you have not registered, I get with Susan, she can help you register for that. Um, for my update, uh, just a quick, I guess, more question for, uh, the council for preference of ordinances. So we have identified several ordinances, um, that have, they already have state organizations that do a lot of what we're asking for in the ordinance. And so as we're looking through these and, and looking for potential recommendations for amendments, is the council more, um, in favor of not duplicating efforts and just sticking with what we can impact, um, or doing, duplicating those efforts? Um, so for example, the three that we're looking at right now, we have the liquor license, we have our social gaming ordinance, and, uh, even the massage, uh, business, where there's already state organizations that do a lot of what we're asking, the liquor license, we don't even really have approval, we just give recommendations for that. And with that one specifically, we already have a process in place, we're just making sure it's up to date with our code. Uh, it was prior done with, uh, resolution and ordinance, we're just putting them together, so it's easy to map together. Um, but it's still back to that same question for when we're looking at our social gaming and the, um, that massage one, where we have gone through some of this experience even, where we're just defaulting to what the state's doing anyways. Um, and we don't have the capacity or the expertise to really follow up on some of those items, so, uh, just a generic question thus far, and we'll go back for further clarification and examples in those, but it's more of a preference of the council, uh, to keep with what we have, or we're duplicating those, or to remove areas that is already the state's responsibility.
What did she say, you said you don't have to let the knowledge or?
Well, sometimes it's, it, each one, e- each example, there's different things. Either we don't have the expertise, we don't have the background in that, we have to default, so, for example, with social gaming, we ended up having to go to our attorney, and we had to call the state, and there was just a question from one business to another, um, and what it meant to our code, and it's just so in the state code, and we have very limited what we can do on that. Um, and the way it's written is just very legal. Uh, so it just ended up, any, any permit that we can actually get for the, any revenue off of that social gaming, um, was definitely not paying for the type of time and energy we put into enforcing it, um, because of all the different, uh, partners we had to use that have actual authority over those things. Um, then, so we, and with the, uh, it, with the, the massage one, there's already the organ massage, uh, board that fills with the licensing and the facility permits, and they do background checks, and, but then we're doing background checks on top of some of those, and, um, is it really, you know, just looking through those, is, even with the code after that's done, where there's spot checks on those things, do we have the capacity and manpower to actually enforce that equally among all licensed massage businesses? Or is it, uh, something that really, we're not even having the staff or the capacity to deal with?
So you're saying these organizations that already do the due diligence on these type of businesses, they're going to still do those, and then will staff, in order to issue a license, will that, the staff just go to those organizations and ask for verification?
Right, so, so a great example, I think the, the liquor license one through our process is actually a really great example of how, uh, a business applies for a liquor license, um, but the state has all control over approving that liquor license. But they, they do defer to the city, give us the ability to recommend whether they approve it or not, and that just puts it on a local level, saying, is there any reason that they should deny it? But those reasons have to fall into the same reasons they would deny it, so we have to go and pretty much justify to them. The, the only real area that I think we have some, um, ability locally on liquor license is having a time, place, manner ordinance, which we do not currently have. Um, that would be something that would be specific to our city, but right now, it's time, place, manner, so if we're, if we're gonna regulate where and when and how a business can locate to do liquor stuff, we have that authority that is not delegated to the state, but when it comes down to looking at how many in the city and, um, is it adequate, is it a right, is that all default, they have the authority to issue that anyway. So when it comes to us, we just, uh, we do have some process where our chief will do a background check, make sure there's no main issue, so we'd still keep that, um, but unless we see anything, we just rec, you know, we just do our process, but it's really hard to justify can, denying one of those, because they maintain most of that authority unless there's some type of criminal activity they haven't received. So there are parts that are unique to us, but then there are parts that's really just delegated to the state. They're, they have the authority in the end to do that, they already have a process, and, and so why do we have an extra code on top of that?
Like the psilocybin ban, or not ban, but psilocybin, is there state ordinance on how that operates? And then we place the time, place, and manner on top of that?
Um, as an example, yes, they did do that, I don't have the exact, that, exact specifics for our city right now, I haven't looked at that, um, specifically, but yes, with the psilocybin, they did allow time, place, manner, but there are certain things we could not, um.
So we let the state run the ordinance, we go by their ordinance, but on the, we did apply time, place, manner?
Right, we deal with what we can deal with.
I personally feel if the state has good ordinance on this, um, I, I would rather them take care of it. Um, maybe exposure, it opens up more opportunity, liability, I mean, I don't know what it, if they are the experts on it, have the time and energy, let them do that, and unless there's something really going like a place, time, manner that we see that we can enhance it
Right.
in a way that is, affects our city differently, then, um, I would be more to fall back on their ordinances. Or at least look at that, see what that looks like.
What about, like, for example, um, once they get their license and then the renewal process, or for example, or that, um, that their, their license expired, right? So would they do that with the state, or you're depending on them to do with the state and we're done?
So liquor license, the state already deals with that, and they deal with renewals, they deal with, um, applications, with the licensed massage therapist, they already deal with that, they have to do applications through them, they, they follow up with them, the renewals, et cetera, the facility permits. Um, social gaming, once again, they have to get approval from them, and they, they deal with enforcement, and that, that's the other part is, um, so for example, with, um, if somebody, if there were a complaint about something with a massage therapist, really, they're calling the state to go do their investigation unless there is a illicit, a criminal activity, which our chief and any federal force would be involved with something like that, but if it's a violation of a, uh, organ, an O R A R, an administrative rule, or an R S, they deal with that investigation themselves. And e- even if we had no ordinance for that one, as an example, we still have our business license, and we would have just behaved in the same way, where we could suspend, revoke, or based off of getting a report that there was, um, if there was some type of activity for any of these businesses that violated the state's code, we could have rejected or revoked a business license, so the rest of that code, that not, not entirely, but a lot of that is, I don't know, it's just there, I guess would be the way to describe, it's just there, but we don't do anything with it and can't do anything with it, because a lot of it is dealt with the state, or we just don't have the staffing to do it.
So just to clarify, the, so if, if, for example, massage therapist, they, they lost the, they lost their therapist's license or whatever, or even liquor's license for whatever reason, and they're going through a renewal process, but to get our, the business license, you would still, if renewal, you will still go to the state, verify.
Correct.
Still have it, I think.
Yeah, that's still part of that process, so, um, no, there's no, no, no proposed or change right now, I'm just looking at what your temperature is on, on those type of ordinances, so that we can make a, a good recommendation based off of any of that.
And those are the three that we typically look at, the liquor, gaming, massage, are there others?
There, there may be others, those are just the most recent where there have been, um, comments made about them, so we've looked a lot more into them. But, um, I'm, I'm always looking at, and so is staff, looking at code and looking for ways to update that and improve. A lot of things haven't been changed for decades, and so we try to bring it up to what state statute already has, or, um, what technology brings, or whatever. So, I mean, some things are different than when it was established, like liquor license, they amended that quite a bit over the several, passed up several decades compared to having authority compared to just giving recommendations and, and where that all plays. I, I think their most recent, I was reading through their R S, I mean, basically said, in the liquor license one, that all municipal codes are void based off of this new, um, statute, and so, and, and that wasn't like this year, I'm just saying there's those examples where the state had, does change their code and their statutes, and sometimes we just haven't updated our code to match that.
So to kind of, before you spend a lot of time and energy and dig, looking at these, you're asking if we're So to kind of, before you spend a lot of time and energy and dig, looking at these, are you asking if we're interested in, in, in looking at this?
Right, yeah, I mean, some of them, just they've taken staff time, like I say, I don't think it's been necessarily the best use, um, the time that we spend into it compared to what we get off of it. Um, there are good benefits behind it, like I said, I'm not saying to remove everything, there's, there are good, uh, oversight that help our community. It's just, uh, we've spent a lot of time going through our code compared to state statute and having to unwind the differences of where we actually have authority compared to not, or what we're able to do and how do we make sure it's fair and consistently done? I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that, um, and really just because they're recent, we're, we're, we've identified them as an issue and just trying to streamline those so that it doesn't cause a problem, the issue is the only reason it is brought up, um, at this point.
Ben, quick question.
Yeah.
What are the heaving zones with the basalt well? And you're, and you're naughty, how you said they're, 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 they're on hold here for the heaving zones and the.
Okay, yeah, um, so a- as far, yeah, other updates there, uh, the basalt well, we've had a couple of interesting, um. Updates on that, we're still working through. So what we have, uh, or what our contractor has really had some issues with, and it's not just the new one, it's the old one. They get down to about six hundred feet or slightly below that, to where we can get the drilling and the casing down. But between there and the basalt layer, there seems to be this zone that keeps collapsing. And getting the casing down after they drill it, it just keeps collapsing and they're not able to get the casing through. So I've had to come through with a couple of different ideas, uh, to try to get that solved. Uh, the most recent one, they're gonna be implementing this next, uh, in about two weeks, after bringing in some new equipment for that. So, um, hopefully we can get, hopefully it works, because that's really the only. We know where the basalt layer is, it's just getting that casing through, there's been some issue right now. So our contractor is working with, um, Yellow Jacket right now to try to. Who's our, GSI?
GSI is, is. A consultant, but.
I think GS. Right, I think it's GS, I, anyways, our consultant that's dealing with construction design and stuff, working with Yellow Jacket and.
Once you solve a collapsing si- situation, then you'll be able to.
Correct, if there, yeah, and that's, that's the problem. We have, we have one for sure way, well, I don't know if anything's for sure, but they, they, they had a. Really high likelihood that it would work, but it's really expensive, so we're trying to not go that route. Our consultants have some other ideas that would be, um, less expensive if they work. Um, that is, so in October, yeah, we already have it, we've already told GSI to put tickets. So we'll find out with this new plan in two weeks and they're, we already told them to come prepared to, uh, present to the council. Either way, whether it works or doesn't, and what that next step would be compared to what our budget is and what money we still have remaining in our, um. In our grants, so that we can get an idea of, and the council can make that decision of, do we keep moving forward? Even if it may go into some of our own funds a little further than we wanted, or do we just backfill? Uh, so that will be a, a decision we bring, bring to the council, um, in October is the. Yeah, we just need a little bit more data before we can really come back on that one.
Is that it?
Um, the, yeah, yeah, everything else, um, we have some, if you looked at the, the department head updates, fellow works as a new format, a little bit more pictures, uh, just any feedback or any questions on any more of those reports, be happy to go over those. Think, uh, that the firm heads, really we're trying to make it as reader friendly for you guys as possible, focus on the important things. Um, and, and not, you know, not just fill it with things that maybe be a little less useful.
We'll take a look at them.
I say somewhere, I didn't. Oh, yeah, it's, it's a coloring book now, no? No, they put some pictures in the last one, I made the comment, I like the pictures, so they put some more pictures in this one, so.
Okay, thank you. Community director, Lori Oliver-Joseph.
Uh, just to keep it real brief, um, let's see, I did check with, uh, ODOT who, um, the city will be in a kickoff meeting, hopefully at the beginning to middle of October for the, uh, St. Helens to Scapu's trail. Um, yeah, so, um, yeah, should be exciting. They are gonna be looking for, one of the first scope items is, um, the consultants will be putting together a, a recruitment flyer, um, we are looking for, we're gonna be looking for four to six, um, volunteers to be on a stakeholder advisory committee, uh, for that trail project, uh, from each jurisdiction. So, yeah, so between, um, the city of Scapu, St. Helens and the county, each jurisdiction, four to six people. Um, they're wanting, you know, uh, possibly people from council, planning commission, school district. Um, uh, business owners, citizens at large. So once I have that, um, I'll certainly share that out with the group and, uh, we can figure out how we want to, uh, identify people to sit on that committee. I'll leave it at that for tonight, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Uh, Chief Llewellyn.
Yes, good evening, uh, mayor, council president, councilors. First, congratulations, once again, your appointment, uh, counselor, um, Marquis looking forward to working with you, sir. And also, it's, uh, Counselor Jacobs was working with her too, uh, as well. You guys do a lot of stuff people don't see, um, we're no paid, except for trying to make the city good. Uh, just a couple of things, that we have two officers going to the DPSC Academy in Salem starting next Monday. Um, hopefully continuing through that and be graduating hoping in January timeframe of two thousand and six, uh, yeah, next year. Uh, two thousand twenty six, I'm sorry. Um, moving forward, we got a couple of other activities coming up, uh, we'll be doing some active threat training, the SPD is coordinating, um, with it, is the inter-agency training. Um, with our firefight partners as well here, um, in the Vanara area, so looking forward to doing that. We'll also be assisting with the, um, march out of, out of darkness, march is upcoming Saturday, traffic, traffic control, uh, for that too as well. And, uh, on the twenty seventh of September, uh, we have a CERT or, um, community emergency response team meeting that's opened up to the public, trying to build a team up here in cities Capus, and it's gonna be at the senior Sarah at six o'clock. Those interested will have members from the, um, county emergency management team and just talk about what CERT is, how people give back. And, um, hopefully never have knock on wood prepare for potential disasters, I'd be more self-sufficient, so. And, um, lastly, congratulations once again to Officer Bernhard, who just got tased recently and, um, took like a champ, so. Yes, ma'am.
So the event on the twenty seventh, is that gonna be taped or reported in the?
Uh, no, it's more of a, a, an open house pretty much, to talk about what the program is. Um, and to see, get interest in a community too as well, or know exactly what the, uh, organization is, so.
If you can't attend, what, how would you find out more about that program?
So from there, you can contact, uh, try to contact maybe, initiate a, an email address to particularly for our CERT team, I get started from there. And that's really, I'm planning to in the future too, to actually open up to, uh, everybody within the city and put more stuff on our social media presence too as well.
Maybe that should also go in our app?
We could do an update, so I could do with weather, look at during that.
Thank you. Student rep Tyler, you got anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm really excited to be working with all of you and all of you.
This is pretty normal.
If there's anything. Before the next council meeting, if there's anything you wanna see from me or anything that I can do to help, uh, better prepare myself for the next council meeting. Uh, I would like to know, so, say about that.
Yeah, we could get email through Susan, maybe, probably on your application, but we'll get it. Yeah, if there's anything we'd like, we'll email you, have you come with some information at the next meeting.
That brings up a good point, do we, what is gonna be our SOP for getting Tyler information? Do we need to discuss that? So I wasn't thinking about that specifically, but more of just sharing the council packets out. How, do we need to include him on the emails that council gets, or do you guys wanna discuss that internally? And, you know, let's know your thoughts.
Yeah, you'll learn, we can't communicate to each other outside of here in groups of, um, definitely four or more. So we don't communicate a lot outside of here, this has gotta be on the record, public meetings. Um, so we don't email each other and discuss anything other than the schedule sometimes. Um, but you'll learn all that as we go.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll make sure you get your packets, uh, so you have all the information ahead of time, you can ask any questions if needed from me, Susan or anybody. Um, as well as, you know, if you just bring anything from the student body perspective of what you're, you know, it doesn't have to be just what's on the packet. If there's anything that you're hearing from your student reps that, hey, this really helped the city, it could be something that we start looking towards our goal setting session in January. And start mentioning those now and we can start thinking about them as well, so. Um, it could be around parks, it could be around recreation, it could be around anything, so.
And maybe for the next month or two, Joel or I want, reach out, we'll meet with you, we'll kinda go over the packet real quick, explain what we're doing. You know, explain some of this, so when you do get, you kinda have a better understanding of why we're doing what we're doing, what an ordinance is, you know, those types of things.
Yeah. Versus a resolution.
So, so Susan, can we get, can we get Tyler, make sure we have, uh, I, I, I already mentioned this to Patty. Um, all the hill, that, that they're gonna have a student session at, at the local, uh, conference. And so I'll make sure if Tyler's available, we, we get him there.
Uh, what days are the?
It's, uh, second, third.
Second, third, fourth, probably.
And you don't, you can go to either day or both days, whatever your availability is.
Just second, second.
Second, third, okay.
So, as we're talking about all this, I'm thinking about, you're a busy student as well with other obligations, your school is number one. So if you feel like certain things are too much, definitely speak up and let us know, cuz we don't wanna overwhelm you either. You do have your, there are priorities first, so.
Especially right out of the gate.
Yeah, we need to be mindful of, of.
The League of Oregon City is a good conference and there, there are things all day long, even into the night, there might be an hour session that might be good for you, maybe. Um, we'll be there all day and all night type of thing, but maybe there's one or two sessions that might work in your schedule.
Well, I think the, the use, the use. That would be really good for you to participate in.
Yeah, it's great. Uh, thank you, Counselor Marquis.
Um, yeah, so pleased to be up here, I appreciate you welcoming me, me. And, uh, and this is, this takes some more endurance than I had. But, thank you all, um, for your, your hard work, yeah.
This is definitely longer than some, our goal, that's why we had to make a motion at nine, our goal is to be always out of here by nine, if, and, and earlier. Um, that's why we have to vote to go past it.
Yeah, but this, this is great, this, this feels like, uh, already like I'm a lot more engaged.
We did have a lot on the, the agenda, we, we did miss last, or the other last month or last week, two weeks ago. We didn't have a lot there and we're, we're fiscally sound and responsible, don't need to have a meeting if there's really nothing to go over. Um, so we had a, we, this one took a little longer, had some more meat on it, including some interviews, so.
Well, yeah, and you had the, you guys pulled the nuclear option. Completely reconfigure.
Yeah, we had some, had the on the fly moments there.
Yeah, so anyway, um, yeah, excited to, to be on council and, um, yeah. Do the best I can.
Appreciate it. Uh, Counselor Hager.
Uh, yeah, just really quickly, the, uh, the school district is, you know, and Tyler alluded to this. Their, their enrollments are off the chart, so they added three or four new teachers at emergency bases. Um, the state is, is suggesting that they're gonna have a billion dollar shortage of federal funds that were being pulled. This, this, and then next year up to, up to five billion, so that's gonna be, it's gonna be a bit of mayhem here for, for a while. But, uh, but I, I think we are a really good place, we've got city council, now we, we lost Marissa, a great counselor, but we, 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 we got two really crackerjacks. So, um, and, and so the, among, among the city staff, the police, council, and then this school board that just haven't, have a new member, I think, uh, homegrown here, uh, Christine Mapes. Um, and, uh, and so the school board, the schools, the school district staff. I have, in my, in my forty, fifty years here, I've never been in a place where everything is looking so good. So, I think we are just really in a good spot.
Thank you. Yeah, they're adding teachers like a week or two into school, you know. Counselor Santiago.
I just wanna say, um, I'm glad to see, uh, Counselor Jacobs leave, but I totally understand, um, why she has to. And welcome, Marty, and welcome, John, and welcome, Tyler, glad to have you on board and looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Council President Miller.
Thank you, uh, just wanna say thank you to Marissa for her service and Tyler, welcome, Marty, welcome. And, uh, it's kinda interesting, I didn't know until I saw on the packet that John had put in for this, but he's my neighbor, um, so. Yeah, um, on the twentieth, just real quick, um, I am coming back from IACP that day and I think I will be back in, early enough to be able to make the, um, meeting though. Oh, what was on the October twentieth?
September thirtieth.
I'm talking about October twenty. Yeah, October twentieth, just throwing it out there, um, okay, that's all I have, keeping it short.
Thank you. Again, yes, welcome Tyler, welcome Marty, welcome John, uh, excited to work with you all. And I'll talk to Marissa off the record, but you wanna thank her for her, her service and her help for me for the last three and a half years, appreciate that. Um, Ty, in, um, respect to time, meeting adjourned.